Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town in Norwood Engineering Department's public hearing for the adoption of stormwater regulations for the Town in Norwood. I am Mark Ryan. I'm the Director of Public Works and Town Engineer. To my left, we have Phil Paradis from Beta Group, who has helped us along in developing these stormwater regulations. To my right is Brian Murphy, the Assistant Town Engineer. Next to Brian is Nick Flannery. He's a Civil Engineer in the Engineering Department. At the end of the table is Steve Lee from the Beta Group. In the audience, we also have Alex Jones, the Assistant Town Planner, and Carly Rockland, who's the Conservation Planner. Just want to say happy birthday to Alex. Today's her birthday, and she said this would be the best gift ever if we get stormwater regulations adopted. So, to give you a little background, 1972, Congress passed the Clean Water Act. Basically, that act was to start cleaning up the rivers and streams and brooks in the nation, control water pollution, basically. 1987, the Clean Water Act was amended to start regulating stormwater discharges, and that's any pipe dumping into a wetland or a river or a brook. The discharge had to be regulated. And then, 1999, the EPA was mandated by, under the Clean Water Act, to run the program, started requiring municipalities with stormwater systems to start developing standards to improve water quality, maintenance of systems, and system improvements as far as how they do operations. And then, 2003, EPA started requiring municipalities throughout the country to get a general permit. So, since 2003 to the present, the Town in Norwood, just like many communities throughout the United States, has to file an annual report for their general permit for their stormwater. And part of the regulations that have been amended year to year include the adoption of a stormwater bylaw, which was adopted in 2022, and by adopting that, that led the way to develop stormwater regulations, and that's why we are here tonight. So, basically, Phil's going to go through a little background, a little bit further in-depth than I did. At the end, we'll open up for questions from the audience, and at that point, Town Norwood Engineering Department, who's a stormwater authority, will adopt these regulations to manage stormwater better in Norwood. So, with that, we'll leave it to Phil.
Thank you, Mark. I have a little presentation here that I can speak to. I do better. It's Talk2 Graphics, so you guys are looking at the screen, not me. Anyway, so, the reason we're here tonight, as Mark alluded to, is that there are certain requirements for the MS4 permit. MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. So, the four S's, MS4. So, it's a stormwater regulation that requires the town to do a number of tasks, part of the permit, and we'll go through to that. So, basically, I just have an outline here. Let me see. Yeah, so, we're going to talk about a little bit, give a little more background on the status of the current drainage systems, development impacts to water quality, the requirements for EPA, and the current Norwood water quality issues and concerns, the bylaw, I mean, the regulations themselves, and then we'll open it up to questions. So, the current drainage systems in most municipalities like Norwood are built prior to 1996. 1996 is when DEP developed stormwater regulations, and prior to that, there were very little to know water quality aspects required in stormwater systems, and therefore, they didn't provide them. So, systems built before 1996 directly discharge pollutants to the waterways of the United States, they degrade water resources with every rain event. So, they're providing, they're pumping pollutants into these resources. They do not currently meet the stormwater management regulations, and likely not sufficient for real stormwater management in terms of flooding issues and prevention. Systems are typically undersized for the current storm events. Stormwater runoff contains salt, and from winter road treatment, soils from unstabilized areas, twigs, leaves, mulch, anything that can be washed into the drainage system, all kinds of trash, as well as anything from motor vehicle byproducts, fertilizers from lawns and yards, and our favorite, detergents from cow washing, and fecal matter from pets and birds. So, all that is typically just washed right into the drainage system. Drainage systems composed primarily of catch basins. You'll see them on the side of the road. They're piped through a manhole system, some piping systems, and directed directly to the nearest wetland or stream, or, you know, just to get it out of the way. Like I said, all these things go into the waterways and create a mess. I don't know if you've seen waters like this. Waters like this, that's the result of too much phosphorus and nitrogen being directed to this particular water body. It grows algae, kills the fish, steals all the oxygen from the water, and generally wreaks havoc on the environment. But that's only part of it. Water quality, storm runoff contains... Water quality is how clean the runoff is, and this is, and water quantity is the result of too much rainfall causing flooding. So, the regulations that we are reviewing are primarily related to development projects, but also, but the goal of EPA is to make sure that the waters draining to the United States are cleaner, that they don't add more pollutants to the waters. Water quality typically includes, the best way to provide water treatment is to provide infiltration quantity, the first flush, you know, the first half-inch or so of runoff carries the majority of your pollutants. Once it's cleaned, and then later on in the storm events, it's much more diluted and/or already in where it needs to go. So, development increases stormwater runoff, increases pollutant load in many ways. So, it increases impervious area, which doesn't allow water to get into the ground, and therefore, it increases stormwater runoff, and then causes that additional runoff is not getting into the ground, so it degrades water supply. And development also reduces the vegetation and reduces natural treatment. A lot of plant life will naturally absorb phosphorus and other pollutants through a natural process. So, without intentionally building techniques to treat runoff, there's, you typically don't get any treatment in development projects. So, the many features of the permit, the object is this, is to educate people, to let them, to help them understand how they can participate in protecting the waters of the United States, you know, like cleaning up after your pets, you know, don't do a cow wash that allows the water to go directly into your drainage systems, control your fertilizer, don't over-fertilize your lawns and such, and if you have a septic system, to properly maintain them and such. And there's many features to reduce stormwater runoff, the most economical and the most ecologically similar to undeveloped land is to use what's called low-impact development techniques and treat runoff at the locations. These could be anywhere from a small infiltration basin or rain garden in your yard, or infiltration, you know, dry well for treatment. So, in 2008, DEP upgraded the stormwater regulations, which were initially policy in 1996, and they basically have all 10 of these, 10 of these standards to regulate any new development. And so, the number 10 is a big one that EPA is also hopping on, illicit discharges, making sure that there's no sewer connections connected to drainage systems. Sewer has, the sewer systems have a different treatment process, they go to treatment plants and such, but the idea is make sure that there's no illegal illicit discharges being discharged to the waters of the United States. So, the MS4 permit requires prohibiting that, and that's what the town enacted a bylaw that incorporates that. And it requires erosion control program during construction, especially so that exposed soils will not discharge sediments and others to the... And also, develop a stormwater management program, long-term, that requires maintenance and maintaining the treatment processes of the system. In 2016, EPA came up with the latest MS4 permit, and it required some minimum standards for the regulations, and that's primarily what we're here for, is to make sure that these are incorporated in the local regulations. So, for any project that disturbs greater than an acre of land, EPA requires that one inch of development, one inch of runoff over the impervious surface of that development be contained on site and/or remove 90% of the total suspended solids over the impervious area, and also remove 60% of the annual phosphorus load. So, using stormwater control measures to address these pollutants of concern as well, and requires inspection of sites or erosion controls. The Town in Norwood has several water bodies that are impaired, that DEP and EPA has designated as impaired. The Ponsett River is impaired for phosphorus, E. coli, and turbidity, and you got the others there, Germer Brook, Purgatory Brook, and Willett Pond, Trap Hole Brook, Hawes Brook, and Meadow Brook. So, it encompasses the majority of the runoff in the town. So, what the Norwood regulations are proposing are a little bit stringent, more stringent regulations, and it's mostly just to keep eyes on development projects. So many, so many little projects that impact the town add up over time, and that's what's happened to much of our developed areas. The majority of drainage systems aren't sufficiently sized because they didn't anticipate all the development, or, and/or they weren't designed to handle expanded development. And too much of our development processes focus on the local neighborhood and not the town as a whole. So, the town is looking to get a little bit more input, not to, and streamline the permit process, make sure that engineers and developers know what is required of them before they even start a project. So, the first threshold is 5,000 square feet of disturbed area to an acre, half an acre of land. That would require what's called an administrative review. That means there would be a... And we'll go through that. And the second threshold is anything over half an acre of disturbance or more, that would require a full land disturbance permit. So, the submissions for an administrative land disturbance review is pretty simple. It's an application. You have a sketch plan or a plan that shows the basics of the project. Am I in the right page? Yeah. So, and then a number of features that we would expect to see engineering-wise in a project like that, like, for instance, infiltrating your roof runoff, making sure that runoff from your driveway doesn't go directly into the street, and various, and potentially other low-impact development techniques that could reduce the runoff to the street. Review would be from the town staff, or the Engineering Department in this case, or whomever they choose, and most likely, within a week, they could decide whether the permit, to grant a permit. And oftentimes, they will come with some conditions, whether it's maintaining your erosion controls throughout the project, and/or other site-specific conditions. A full land disturbance permit is a little more extensive. There's, it's more in line with a conventional stormwater report and requiring all the details required in that, and that would be a full erosion control plan, including low-impact development techniques or other stormwater control measures that would meet the treatment and the flow reduction requirements associated with development projects. The Stormwater Authority, the Engineering Department would review those, hold a public hearing process, and typically, within a month, would render their decision. Just as an example of what we would expect to catch, a modest, single-family home, and this is kind of a, just a fantasy, you know, all these different homes have different characteristics, but a modest family home on a typical parcel in Norwood would not meet the threshold for being under 5,000 square feet. But a larger home, most likely would, would require at least a minimum of administrative review and such. So, what Norwood has implemented through the many meetings we've had together, working with the Building Department, Conservation Planning, and Engineering, and DPW, we recommended a few changes or a few, we've already kind of reviewed the thresholds, those were kind of set as we discussed. We also want to be using a more modern or more up-to-date land rainfall data. The typical data that's been used for most models prior to this, the last few years, is called Technical Paper 40. That was data that was generated prior to 1960. Turns out, that whole data set was also, was a cycle of drought in much of the United States, so that is significantly lower than what we experience today, and you probably already know it, that, you know, a rainfall system. So, we propose to use the NOAA Atlas 14, and that's what MassDOT is going to come out with in their new regulations soon, MassDEP. We recommend infiltration testing for larger infiltration systems. The biggest challenge that we have today is the how to regulate soil conditions and what, different soil conditions and different water conditions and different, typically, right now, the current way to do it is to look at, dig a test pit, look at the soil texture, and relate it to what's called the raw table, and choose an infiltration rate. We want to make sure that these infiltration systems mostly are, the majority of them are out of sight, so we want to make sure that they work right when we, when they're installed. So, as part of the design process, we recommend testing be included. We also want to increase the amount of infiltration due to the town's flooding problems, although it's not going to solve them, it will greatly enhance the reversal of impacts. So, the town wants to infiltrate two inches of runoff over the impervious area as opposed to one. And then, we are also recommending to reduce the amount of sump pumps needed and groundwater movement into the town system, is to maintain two-foot separation between the lowest floor elevation and the seasonal high groundwater elevation, so that you're not worried about having to pump out your cellar, which is in the groundwater table, and such. So, anyway, that's a basis. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to help you out with those.
Before I open it to the audience, so, I mean, these stormwater regulations, this is, like I said at the beginning, this is a requirement by the EPA under the MS4 and NEPTI's permitting process. We're catching up with a lot of adjacent communities. This regulation is very similar to the adjacent towns. We're in the Ponsett Valley River watershed, and, you know, they developed the first regulation, and mostly municipalities in that watershed have adopted it with some tweaks here and there. So, this goes a long way, as Phil said, to improve in water quality in town. This is our main goal of this regulation, to clean up the waters, help how waters from our developments, from our streets, get to the rivers and streams, try to clean that up, but it also provides some help in, you know, the flooding that we've had here. The regulations in here, going forward, with the Planning Board, Conservation, Zoning Board, will have more stringent requirements on determining rates of runoff, so that will help manage runoff on the properties a lot better before they're discharged into the town system or into nearby lakes and streams. So, that'll go a long way on redevelopments and new developments. So, this is, this is a great tool to have in the town's toolbox. We do a lot of things to try to clean up water throughout the town through our current standards, which, you know, don't go as far as this, but have brought us a long way, you know, street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, pet waste laws, things of that nature, education, especially as Phil said, fertilizing. We send out leaflets and the water bills on things like pet waste and fertilizing your lawns, and, you know, we think that goes a long way, too, to help clean up the waters. So, as far as this hearing goes, we will open it up now to the public for any questions and see if we can answer it for them. So, is there any questions from the public?
I guess I have one question.
Sure.
Who approves this? Is this this committee, or is it the selectmen?
So, it's the Stormwater Authority, which is the Norwood Engineering Department, so it'd be us.
And this is online?
This is online, yes.
Okay.
I have a question. So, this is only impacting new builds moving forward?
Redevelopment.
New constructions and...
Yep, going forward, correct.
Are developments going in, will the area that's there existing be looked at, and how that impacts catch basins that are already existing if the stormwater gets diverted?
Yes, so, right now, on a development, it's, there's an in-depth review of the stormwater, how it flows in the existing condition, and then how it flows in the post-construction. It would be looked at in redevelopment areas and new development areas, and this has a lot more stricter controls on them, so it goes a long way with how much water can leave the site and where it's going, and how clean it is, too.
I got a question. So, you said that the smaller projects, smaller single-family homes, will not be under review for this?
Correct.
So, you're not looking to save any stormwater on that property, that's all, can just runoff?
So, a couple of things on that. They could fall under permit with the Conservation Commission, which they would be, be some additional conditions on that. This regulation also gives the Stormwater Authority the ability to recognize if construction is going on and they are discharging water into the street during construction. We can make them file a permit to control that, but we wouldn't be implementing flood control on their project, but we would be implementing ways to keep the runoff from going into the street, filling up the catch basins, and dirtying the water downstream.
Here's my other question. So, if a developer came in, would it be the Town in Norwood's responsibility, or would they make the contractor then do a soil assessment to find out if the ground is permeable or not, or, like, who would actually require the contractor, developer, to investigate some surface of groundwater?
An engineer would have to do that for the applicant. They'd have to go out there and do the testing.
Okay, so that would be a sign-off as part of the regulations for construction?
That would be part of their submittal to the Stormwater Authority, yes.
What would be the effective date of these regulations?
Today, once this vote is taken.
So, one of the goals of the town was also to consolidate all the development projects in town and have one set of regulations. There'll be a process for the other bylaws and regulations in town to kind of decentralize and refer to this document, so whether it's the Conservation Commission reviewing it... reviewing it, or the Planning Board, or the Zoning Board, or, or whomever, uh, they, the project comes before, they'll all review them according to these regulations.
Hi, Alex.
I just wanted to, um, say, uh, thank you to the engineering department, um, for your hard work on this, um, and for taking on this, um, it's been, it's been some work up to now, and it's going to be more work, after you adopt these regulations and have to start issuing these permits. Um, and, um, I, for one, um, really appreciate it, um, I think this is something our town really needs, um, in terms of, of addressing, like, sort of incrementally, um, working to incorporate water quality and flood control into every, um, new construction, new redevelopment, um, and, and basically the way we think about how we do things. So, um, I'm excited and I'm grateful, and I wanna thank Beta too, um, and, um, for your, for your expertise and your guidance and for helping push us over the finish line. Um, and I wanted to, to note that, um, we, um, the town had received a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant to, that helped us hire Beta to, um, help put these regulations together, um, as well as review, uh, other regulations that we're working on. And it's been part of sort of a comprehensive, um, look at, um, so the Planning Board, even on Monday, will be, um, taking the first step to update their subdivision rules and regulations, for instance, to, um, incorporate these low-impact development techniques, um, and, and, um, our local planning agency has helped with that, and Beta Group is helping that as well. So, um, I thank you to you all, and also to the state for, for giving us money to, to help move this along.
Thanks, Alex, and thanks to you and Carly for your help and guidance on this, and also getting that state grant, so that was a big help. Seeing no other questions, I'll open it up to a vote, uh, and make a motion to adapt, adopt the stormwater regulations for the town in Norwood as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three to zero. You formally adopted, Alex, you have your regulations for a birthday present.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming, everyone.